All right. Good morning, everyone. It's 9:30 and we'll call this. We'll call this meeting start. Thank you, everybody for coming down. Staff, take roll call.
Chairman Hernandez.
Here.
Vice Chair Limblum.
Here.
Commissioner Arnett.
Here.
Commissioner Curly.
Here.
Commissioner Dan Zeison. Commissioner Landau.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Slusher. Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
All right. Thank you, Rosalie. All right, we'll get through some announcements here. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with the open meeting law, Arizona revised statutes 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to the hearing at www.mericopa.gov/Planning. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. The chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. So now moving on to the agenda. Darren, do we have any changes to the agenda? Great. Thank you, Darren. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. I need to put into the record that I will have to recuse myself from voting on item number one. But with that being said, Darren, we're ready for the.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have two items on consent and I understand you're recusing from vote on item number one, which is Z2023-053, known as a New Leaf East Valley Men's Center in District 2. This is a four-acre zone change to Industrial 2 IUPD for a side at southeast corner of Country Club Road and Lehigh Road in the Mesa area. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 17 is for approval. Subject conditions A through J. And the second and final consent item is Z2023-142, known as White Take Energy Storage in District 4. It's a 35 and 1/2 acre rezone to Industrial 2 IUPD at the northeast corner of El Mirage Road and Indian School Road. There's no known opposition. In paragraph 13, the recommendation is for approval. Subject conditions A through J. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Darren. Does anybody on the commission have any questions of staff? Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak regarding these cases? David, is anybody on the webinar have their hand raised?
We're not aware of anyone online.
Okay, sounds good. So with that, we'll close the public forum. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I failed to mention there's a handout before the commissioners this morning regarding agenda item 2, Z2023-142, with changes to conditions, including revised language for A, F, G, I, and J. This has been negotiated with the applicant. It's clarifying language and not substantial.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions on that as well.
Okay, thank you, Darren. So with that, we will close the public forum. Is there anybody on the commission who has any comments or at this time? All right, we're hearing none. I'm open for a motion.
Commissioner Landau make a motion to approve consent agenda, the consent included. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Including the changes presented for item number 2 this morning.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval by Commissioner Landau.
I'll second it, Commissioner Lawrence.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there any comments regarding the motion? All right, hearing none. We will ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Arnett.
Yes.
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Limblum.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
I recuse myself from agenda item number one and yes for agenda item number two.
Chairman, we have a motion approving the consent agenda by a vote of 7 to 0 with a recusal of item number 1.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. We got agenda item number 4. Ready for staff to present the case.
Thank you, Chairman, commissioners. Z2023-134, known as Sun Lakes RNS Center LP, requested zone change over the western portion of a 3.4 acre parcel from C2 to R5. Next slide, please. The subject property is located south of the southeast corner of Sun Lakes Boulevard and Reggs Road in the Sun Lakes area. The subject property is currently split zoned with the eastern portion of the property in the R5 zoning district and the western portion of the property in the C2 zoning district. Next slide, please. The requested zone change will bring the property into unified zoning and will eliminate the zoning district boundary line currently bisecting the property. While not a part of the current case, the applicant has expressed the desire to expand an existing multifamily development on the property. Multifamily residential is already an allowed use within the C2 zoning district. However, the zoning ordinance treats zoning district boundary lines as the factual lot lines for setback purposes, complicating site development. Staff notes that one email of opposition was received. The email described general opposition to multifamily development on the site. Staff notes that even without the requested zone change, multifamily is still an allowed use on the subject property. Staff feels the proposed zone change is appropriate for the site as it matches surrounding land use patterns and will create a buffer between commercial zoning and Reggs Road to the north and single-family residential to the south. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion recommending that the board of supervisors approve Z2023-134, subject to conditions A through E. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, is there any questions of staff by the commission? All right. Is the applicant here wanting to present? Good morning. Thank you for coming down. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Brent Emerton with BNR Engineering on behalf of RNS Center LP. We appreciate the board's consideration in changing the zone from C2 to R5. The owner and developer has identified a need for quality residential in the area. We feel this down zoning would be appropriate for this area and can provide a buffer between residential and the existing commercial building. As Joseph mentioned, the east portion of this property is currently an apartment complex and that would could be a concept for the developer to expand that same similar concept. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions of the applicant from the commission? All right. Is there anybody here in person that would? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here in person who would like to speak regarding this case? David, do we have anybody online?
Chairman, there is no one online wishing to speak on this topic.
All right. Thank you very much and. Okay, with that, we'll close the public forum. Is there any, any questions or comments from the commission on this case? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Lawrence. I'll move to approve agenda item 4 with conditions A through E.
All right, we have a recommendation for approval by Commissioner Lawrence. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Landau, I second.
And we got a second by Commissioner Landau. Are there any comments regarding the motion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Arnett.
Yes.
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Limblum.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion of approval by a vote of 7 to 0.
All right, thank you, Rosalie. Moving on, regular agenda item number 5. We can get staff to present the case, please.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Agenda item number 5, KZ2022-171 in Supervisor District 4 is a special use permit request for Gambler's Row for an equestrian event facility within RV Park in the Rural 43 zoning district. This case was initially heard by the commission on November 2, 2023, where the commission adopted a motion recommending the board of supervisors deny this request by a vote of 4 to 1. On December 6, 2023, the board of supervisors voted to remand the case back to the commission per the applicant's request in order to make changes and conduct additional neighborhood outreach efforts. The site is located in the Agila area, approximately 500 feet west of the southwest corner of Pete Road and Eagle Eye Road and is comprised of approximately 74.6 acres. The proposed development would include two outdoor arenas, one indoor arena, cattle holding pens, 298 parking stalls, areas for retail and concession vendors, an announcer's booth, as well as two RV parks, which would consist of 140 spaces with three comfort stations. The applicant made no changes to the original development of the site, but provided an updated narrative where they are proposing to provide shielded, direct lighting facing downward towards the arena and to keep amplified sound to a minimum with the speakers facing downward and to the south away from the residential development located north of the site. The applicant is also proposing modifications that address dust, traffic, and equestrian and aviation conflict as stated in paragraph 29 of the staff report. Since the BOs decision to remand the case back to the commission, the applicant has completed additional outreach to the surrounding neighbors. They have been able to obtain the support of 54 additional surrounding property owners, but they have not been able to successfully overturn the opposition except for two as provided in the handout dated January 25, 2024. The applicant provided a letter from a member of the Valley of the Eagle Management Airpark stating that Sampley Airpark is in support of this project. Staff has not received any individual letters from property owners that reside within the Sampley Airpark supporting the statement. Staff has received additional letters of opposition provided to the commission on the handout dated January 23. The opposition letter stated that the letter from the Valley of the Eagle Management Company Airpark is not correct as they are residents and do not support this project as they still have concerns regarding drainage, dust, lighting, noise, traffic, and manure disposal. Yesterday, January 24, staff was contacted by ADOT requesting to review the traffic impact study as they have concerns with the US 60 and Eagle Eye Road. Staff notes that the proposed use is a high-intensity, large-scale use, which may be appropriate for this location and with the proposed conditions can make the site work with the surrounding residential rural neighborhood. Staff recognizes that applicants' efforts to work with the surrounding neighbors to address their concerns with project modification and clarification of mitigating project aspects. Staff is supportive of the SUP despite the community opposition based upon the mitigation measures, which are included as conditions in staff recommendation. Staff recommends a motion of approval of KZ2022-171, subject to conditions A through N. At this time, I'm open to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the commission for staff? All right, is the applicant here and want to present the case? Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. Shannon Whitaker with Garrison 48. I'm here representing my client, GTL Properties LLC for the project Gambler's Row. Thank you for the present, or thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Thank you to staff for putting together a great report and also to all the community members that made the travel down here. I know it is getting up early in the morning and traveling about two hours. Even the opposition, the supporters, thank you for coming because this is all part of the process. So I would also like to take this moment to ensure the commission that the residents, we're completely committed to continuing with quality management and making sure that we address any concerns as they come up pending approval and thus moving forward. So the project Gambler's Row will bring in a unique community opportunity where the applicant will be investing upwards of $20 million, generating economic growth, workforce development, and while respecting public health and safety of all the residents of Agila and the surrounding community neighborhoods. And if we could switch a couple of slides over to the map. There it is, okay. So I just want to point out really quick. The map and staff worked hand in hand with us. We were asking a lot of you guys, so we appreciate you getting back to us. The map on the left, this one is the one from September 25. And as you can see on the top portion of it, it's missing from the one that was put into the staff report. So I just want to make sure that we know we have some more supporters up to the, towards the north of where the project will be. Since the December 6, 2023 Board of Supervisors' decision to remand the case back to the commission, which we asked for, we have completed additional outreach and to the surrounding neighborhoods with 54 new property owners being in support for a total of 484 and the opposition, which has remained at 176. Included in the Sampley Airpark support letters, of which staff just referred to, we have a new development and I think it's a very important development on our, since our October Citizens Participation Plan Report, where we highlighted the September public hearing where the Sampley Airpark residents, they raised most of the concerns and took up a substantial port of the conversation. This resident comes from the Sampley Airpark. The facility will consist of two outdoor arenas, one indoor arena, and the equine events will occur occasionally or seasonally between the months of October and March during daylight hours and then also a little bit into the night. The outdoor arenas are proposed to have lighting that will comply with the Maricopa County ordinances. Some of the concerns that you might hear today have to do with drainage, which we have provided information to the residents as well as addressing in both public hearings regarding questions of downstream contamination due to the cattle and the horses. The retention basins provided in accordance with Maricopa County requirements and specifications will function as settling ponds captured upstream flows and releasing them much lower velocity than they entered. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we are following the Maricopa County standards and ordinances and respecting all of those, those rules. Staff has noted in the report the proposed event facility is appropriate for the location and the proposed conditions could make the site work with the surrounding residential rural neighborhood. Staff has also recognized that my client's efforts to work with the surrounding neighborhood, neighborhood members and to address those concerns with project modifications and clarification of mitigating a project aspects, noting that while there is still the same amount of opposition surrounding the project, the project modifications have addressed concerns with regards to dust, lighting, noise, amplified speakers, the aviation conflict, and also the traffic. When we acknowledge that the noncompliance with the Maricopa County regulations ordinance shall be grounds for initiating revocation of this SUP as set forth in the Maricopa County zoning ordinances. And with that, I'm available for questions, but I do have my experts right behind me that can kind of dive more into those, those concerns for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any questions of the applicant from the commission? All right. We'll proceed with in-person speakers and then we'll allow those registered online to speak. After public comment, we'll allow time for rebuttal by the applicant. Do you want, oh, you want them to speak? Oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim Downing. I'm one of the engineers working on the project. And I am here to address traffic and drainage. I'll take drainage first. Drainage is regulated by Maricopa County. We are not allowed to develop the property except in accordance with the drainage ordinances and design standards of Maricopa County. The other issue that I've heard in the past with regard to drainage has been the flooding to the north of this site of Eagle Eye Road by Grasswash. Grasswash crosses Eagle Eye Road from the southeast to the northwest. It is a mapped floodplain. Our project is on the west side of Eagle Eye Road and the drainage is to the north. Therefore, this project will not contribute any runoff to the amount of water that flows across Eagle Eye Road in Grasswash. Our drainage discharges to the west side of Eagle Eye Road instead of the east side. With respect to traffic, we had a traffic study done. It was approved by Maricopa County by MACDOT. And we have also complied with MACDOT's requirements with the perimeter streets, the improvements to Eagle Eye Road, the improvements to Pete Road, the paving of Gambler's Way as well as the paved road on the west side of the project. And so we've, the Pete Road as an example on the west side of Eagle Eye Road today is a dirt road. When we get done with it, it's going to be paved. Eagle Eye Road here again is going to be improved. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Okay, thank you very much. Please state your name for the record.
John Morales with, I'm one of the engineers too. This, our team has been working diligently with, with staff and we've been working since the moment that we went to, to P&amp;Z remanded this case. And up until the last minute, I mean, we've gotten more support letters that were from the opposition that converted to, because they didn't know the whole details about, about the project. And as Jim mentioned, the, one of the biggest things was the dust control and the, as he mentioned, we were, we will be paving over mile and a half of paved roof that were, that will, especially Pete Road, that's really a very narrow dirt, dirt road. And like he mentioned, as far as the biggest thing has been the drainage, we're really following the MACDOT, the county standards and what's coming in, the flows that are coming in, we're not exceeding the flows going out. We look forward to having this project move forward and, and as our, our public relations, Shannon mentioned, we're still going to be working with, with whether the opposition and any, any cases that, that come up with, with this project. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there, you have any more? You're done? Okay, cool. Okay, so we will proceed with the in-person speakers. Then we'll allow those registered online to speak. After public comment, we will allow time for rebuttal by the applicant. So this is wonderful that everybody showed up today. It's nice to see some interaction from the community on this case, but we have a lot of speakers, so please, we will have a clock of two minutes. So at two minutes, we will cut you off. If you are speaking, whether in support or opposition, there's, will be no need to repeat the same issues over and over or the same things for support. Just let's try and keep it concise. All right, so we will get started. Susan Lay. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Susan Lay. We were here on November 2 when you voted to reject the Gambler's Row proposal due to large opposition from neighbors in proximity to establish neighborhoods and air parks. Oh. Sorry, can you start my clock over? We were here on November 2 when you, we, you voted to reject the Gambler's Row proposal due to large opposition from neighbors in proximity to establish neighborhoods and air parks. So we're all asking what has changed since then. Well, they made a few tweaks on lighting and sound. Okay. And then there is some glaring misinformation, which weighs heavily on this case. The project summary you receive states the applicant obtained a letter of support from Sampley Airpark. This could not be farther from the truth and you will be hearing more about that. Secondly, a large portion of the hundreds of supporters are not even neighbors to this facility like we are and live miles and miles away. In fact, many of the supporters here today are likely from Wickenburg. Since Gambler's Row advertised in their newspaper and social media, they would offer free rides here for folks wanting to show support. That's 30 to 40 miles from Agila. Agila, Agila is a far northwest corner of Maricopa County and almost two hours from here. So who will monitor and enforce the regulations and conditions placed on Gambler's Row? And how do we know we can trust it? It would appear they haven't been fully honest in some of the information provided. Major concerns you'll be hearing about today include traffic, Eagle Eye is a two-lane road, not a highway. Safety, Maricopa County sheriffs are over an hour away. Aviation, our runway mixed with horses equals trouble. Drainage and animal waste hazards, dust and noise. Our air parks have been here for over 20, 50 years. We understand the need for change, but does it really make sense to build this proposed site location when there are literally thousands of acres, open acres near Agila? We've been told by one of the folks at Gambler's Row, they work closely with the planning commissioners and you have assured them their proposal would be passed. Is this another misrepresentation? I don't know. But I would ask that you listen closely to our concerns before you decide if, in fact, this is the right location for Gambler's Row and ask yourselves, would you want this next to your family home?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Carolyn Jones.
I'm Carolyn Jones. I live at 518-52 West Pete Road, directly north of the proposed project. This red right here is actually our 20-acre parcel and it was never put on the map that we disapprove of this and I've asked twice. The thought of such a large commercial enterprise right across the road from my home breaks my heart. I've read both all the narrative in the planning reports. The opposition map has not changed. I printed out every comment letter. The 470 support number is grossly exaggerated. At least 150 were exact duplicates, triplicates, and quadruplicates. 60 had the same parcel numbers. 100 were written by the same person in the same handwriting. The traffic report was done in late May when no one's here. The rest of this report states that the applicant obtained a letter from Sampley Airpark. Well, I'm the president of the HOA and I can tell you that is false. All of the other changes were insignificant. The promises to follow the county regulations won't nearly do enough to alleviate all the health and safety problems such a large project is guaranteed to cause. No one has ever contacted us personally and we're the closest ones. We haven't had one single person outreach to us. So why is the commission told in December to deny the project, yet a month later told to support it? The commission's goal is to protect public health, safety, and well-being. So I'm begging you to please take all this new information into account and do not allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sheri Iding.
Good morning. I'm Sheri Iding, 48008 North 508 Avenue in Agila on Eagle Roost Airpark. My husband is a professional pilot and a certified flight instructor. And the FAA class that he did to a refresher course was focused on the culture of safety. The aviator's Model Code of Conduct in Guideline to Advance Aviation Safety and Professionalism, aviators should make safety the highest priority. First is passenger safety. Next is to avoid operation that may alarm, disturb or endanger passengers or people on the surface. The moment this facility starts to exist, it immediately puts all the professional aviators into a safety dilemma. How do you not alarm, disturb or endanger all these animals and humans that are right in the direct path of your takeoffs or landings? For 50 years, this has not been a problem. Reducing pilot fatalities on takeoffs and landings is also an emphasis. The FAA Aviation Circular 61-98B indicates pilots are not to return to the runway they just took off from when experiencing mechanical failure, but to continue straight ahead. The safest action is to fly the aircraft down to a controlled off airport landing, reducing the probability of death. Too many times, a pilot will try to turn around and lose airspeed to the point the plane stops flying and becomes a falling object. It hits the ground with fatal results and extensive damage to the property or people on the ground. This facility is exactly where the impact will be or an off-airport landing will occur. So I just want to ask if this question facility was there and we were asking to build two air parks, would that be a safe thing to do? I think not. So I just don't think this is a good location for this facility. There are other areas, as spoke up prior to, that we could put this and, you know, increase our aviation safety and decrease any kind of fatal mishaps that could occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Richard Milhouse.
I'm Richard Milhouse and I oppose Gambler's Row project because it's in the wrong place. I live at Eagle Roost Airport and I want to take, talk about safety and planning commission's responsibility for the usage and compatibility of projects in Agila. This project expects 1,800 people, 700 animals and 290 vehicles to be corralled 2,700 feet from the south end of Sampley Airport, 3,500 feet from Eagle's Roost Airport. How did thousands of acres outside of Agila get ignored for this project? Instead, they crammed a high people concentration project, seven days a week adjacent to two active airports. Why are airports designed with strict regulations to be away from public activities? It's for the public's and pilot's safety. Do airplanes always take off when they're supposed to and land when they're supposed to? They do not. All airplanes are at risk at any airport. Sampley and Eagle's Roost have had airplanes not continue to fly after taking off. That leaves people on the ground exposed. In those incidents, pilot training says to fly straight ahead and not necessarily make turns to avoid dangerous stall spin accidents. These accidents are lethal to pilots, passengers and people on the ground. Gambler Row is asking for an exceedingly high number of people where those airplanes could end up from failed takeoffs. These failures are not pilot errors. They are airplanes that quit running, just as our cars, trucks and motorcycles do. Very unfortunately, this project has created a Hatfield and McCoy arguments amongst friends here at Agila. Gambler Row is a planning misfit in the Agila Airport community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Scott Porter.
Good morning and thank you for this opportunity to talk on Gambler's Row.
Can you please state your name for the?
Scott Porter. 51314 Pete Road. My wife and I live in one of the closest houses to this project. Pilots don't have a choice on which direction to take off. The wind dictates which direction that we need to take off from. The prevailing wind is such that we're going to have to take off to the south and Sampley's is going to be taken off directly smack dab in the middle of this project. The aircraft are going to be at a low elevation and max power setting. They're going to be generating the maximum amount of noise that that aircraft is ever going to produce on this takeoff mode. Since 97, six planes crashed south of our two airports. Our airports have been there for 50 years. Changing this zoning, which I know is going to be done, not officially a zoning change, but an SUP, is not a great idea as far as safety is concerned. When we lay our heads on our pillows and go to sleep at night, we don't want to have our night sky interrupted. I know there's some mitigation that's been done to try to mitigate this, but it's still going to happen. It's still going to happen, listening to the noise. It's still going to happen, basically having a feedlot up there with increased animal confinement to the max, flies, noise, everything else. Most accidents happen within close proximity to runways. Pilots have to continue straight out. We can't attempt what is known as the impossible turn. We have about two seconds, if we lose our engines, to push our nose down to maintain airspeed and we have to accept what's in straight in front of us. Unfortunately, it's not always good, the outcome of this. So please consider these aspects when you consider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Douglas Schmidt. And again, if, please, if someone's already stated, you know, something that you guys are opposing, please keep it new items.
Good morning, Douglas Schmidt. I'm a resident of Eagle Roost. I've, I'm a commercial pilot and been involved in aviation most of my life. Flown big jets and crop dusters. And most of the time when I was flying the crop dusters, we had issues with cattle and horses. I was chief pilot for a company and we were getting phone calls all the time when airplanes were close to a facility and spooked animals. The runway at Sampley's, the southern end of the runway is a very short distance from this proposed facility. And I suggest that it not be built because it won't take very long and they will shut down that runway. It will happen. Somebody will complain. Who's going to take responsibility if a horse gets spooked and somebody gets hurt? But that's my concern. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Carol Cook.
Covering it, you don't want that. Hi, I'm Carol Cook. I'm a pilot, full-time resident at Eagle Roost Air Park. My home's, my home is on Pete Road in the south end of our runway. It gives me clear view of aircraft taking off and landing in the well-documented physical phase of flight, critical phase of the flight. 80% of all aircraft accidents happen during that time. We recently lost one of our dear neighbors while attempting to land at a private airpark in Texas. He had a missed approach then a stall spin to his death. His fatal crash was next to an airport and a shopping center parking lot right near a mother-daughter salon, not in the FAA-approved safety zone. That small airpark used to be in a wide-open area. All of the development built up after the airpark was there. Many private airports have been closed after development constructed around them because they were eventually deemed unsafe for the area. We cannot risk our private airports being closed after they were specifically constructed out in the open desert for safety reasons. I've also been an avid horseback rider, involved in moving herds of cattle. They spook easily and I can assure you, very loud, low-frying aircraft will cause cattle and horses to panic. Picture, if you will, the old western movie cattle stampede. Remember, they don't stop running from their perceived danger and will charge through and destroy anything, including fences and people. Please consider the safety of unsuspecting children that could be trampled if that were to happen. Gambler's Row is aptly named. It's a big gamble with the well-being of all involved. I'm completely against this development so near to our active airports. Please deny this special use permit for the safety of all involved. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you very much. See, Kim Porter.
Hi, my name is Kim Porter. I live at 51314 Pete Road, within 1,500 feet of the proposed location. We live in an airpark and airplanes and noise are part of our community. We are opposed to the location of this project because of its proximity to our runways and taxiways. In Arizona, Colorado, Washington and even in Wickenburg, our airports are and were here first and just like now, people want to be close to our airpark that has been here over 50 years. But after building and becoming neighbors, they all of a sudden appear back before this very commission complaining of noise and flights of our park's airplanes. We have helicopters, acrobatic planes, warplanes, biplanes, experimental twins and small jets taking off and landing at our airpark. How long before the noise becomes a problem and we must defend our planes, homes and way of life? The same issue is in the AOPA magazine, the February 24th edition on page 10. For this reason, we are opposed to this location of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Boykin.
Good morning, my name is Randy Boykin. I own property at Eagle Roost Air Park. I'm a pilot and have experienced an in-flight engine failure. I can tell you, your options are limited by altitude and terrain. Aircraft are machines and like any other machine, they can have mechanical failures. But unlike a ground vehicle, we cannot just pull over to the side of the road. Our options are limited. Turning at low speeds can cause a stall spin and at low altitude, there's little chance of recovery. We are trained to fly straight ahead at low altitudes like during takeoffs and landing. When an aircraft is involved in an accident, the fuel tank can rupture, spill fuel, ignite and cause severe burns and deaths to people on the ground. Not to mention the impact that the aircraft itself would have. Having many people crowded into a facility of this size right in the flight path where accidents, where aircraft are maneuvering at low altitudes and low speed is asking for disaster. If an accident does occur, how long do you think it's going to take for the emergency crews to respond to this rural area? Local volunteers would take some time to arrive. Maricopa County response would be an hour or more. It's a long time for people to suffer. I'm opposed to this project. There are other places more suitable to put this facility than at the end of our runway.
Thank you, sir. Next up, and forgive me if I butcher your last name, Dale Zogelman.
I'm Dale Zogelman. I reside at 50807 West William Road. Gambler's Row claims they're going to run up to 1,050 teams at these events. That equates to 2,100 horses, 1,050 cattle unless they run them twice, 2,100 trucks, trailers, 60 employees, 300 spectators, six food trucks. When you get that all done, that's 152,888 feet of trucks, trailers, vehicles going into a park. That's approximately three miles of traffic coming off of Highway 60 going on to Eagle Eye Road. A road, they're going to blacktop Pete Road. Pete Road has nothing to do with the access that, once you get in there. You've got to get there first. They claim there's no, they're half going to come from the house, from the south and half from the north. The south road's full of curves and dips, floods partially. The majority of the entrance are going to come off Highway 60 and turn onto a two-lane road, Eagle Eye Road, creating a monumental traffic jam. No one in that first two miles is going to be able to get in or out of their two entrances, entrance or exit because of the traffic jam. How can the commission approve a project in Agila that was voted down just nine miles east of the proposed location? Makes no sense. Highway 60 is a two-lane road. Eagle Eye's a blacktop. No shoulders, no drainage ditches. Who's going to maintain traffic or road safety with it? With the units turning off on a 50 mile an hour speed limit? According to the AZDOT District Office in Prescott, this same project was turned down because of traffic concerns. Now you move it nine miles west, more traffic, more units and you want to approve it. How can that be? Same highway, worse turning conditions, and what's changed? Now let's talk about economic impact. Ropers, mostly from the coal country, come here. They bring their horses, their trucks, their trailers. They mostly bunch up in anywhere from three to 10 units as shown by the signatures on the parcels. What economic plus is there from them except buying food, fuel? They have no brick and mortar. They pay no taxes. Few of them do. At any rate, thank you very much. We think there's a better location for this than balling up the road that's going to our entrances to our parks.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up, Cheryl Christie.
My name is Cheryl Christie and I live in Eagle Roost Air Park and I'm firmly opposed to the location of this project. As per Andy Roth, ADOT District Supervisor who oversees Wickenburg and Agila region, the Maricopa County Planning and Zoning Commission has not notified his office or requested a traffic impact study from ADOT. What Gambler's Row did was run a traffic count study on Eagle Eye Road in May when most of the people are not here. That's a big difference between a count when no one's here versus when everyone is here, plus the proposed amount of traffic increase this project will bring. He stated that this does happen often. In 2022, a similar project was voted down at Forepaw and Mr. Roth's department was involved in that one. He further stated, should Maricopa County approve and require any roads widened, turn lanes or roundabouts, it would be a five-year minimum before they could be constructed as all work with ADOT is on a five-year plan. For this reason, this project should not be approved. US 60 is a major traffic corridor. Eagle Eye Road has no ditches, drainage, shoulders and floods. It's a 12-foot wide road, 24 feet total width and you're going to allow approximately 2,466 units in and out a day with approximately three miles of continuous traffic one-way. This traffic will all flow by our only entrance and exit to our airpark and Sampley Air Park. Residents will be unable to access their own homes off Eagle Eye Road. For these reasons, we urge the commission to vote no to the location of this project and preserve our peace, tranquility and our ability to access our homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, George Bartley.
Morning to the commission. I'm George Bartley. My wife and I have lived in Eagle Roost in the same, same house for over 18 years. I've seen all kinds of conditions from flooding to traffic impact that area. Proposed project area is low-density, very rural. The intrusion of such a high-impact operation would be devastating. The traffic generated unmanageable without extensive road build-out, traffic controls not only on Eagle Eye but on 60, US 60. Already, there is heavy truck use and farm equipment presence on Eagle Eye and US 60 as an alternate to I-10 and a shortcut. The sheer crush of adding hundreds of livestock vehicles would be incredibly endangered to all. Access by emergency services to current residents and venue participants would also be adversely affected. Since your commission's title implies forward-thinking, you must consider the obvious but also the more subtle costs that will surely follow. Number one, the need to increase the capacity of US 60 and Eagle Eye Road. Two, the addition of traffic control solutions. Three, the absolute necessity of adding another access route by acquiring property west of Eagle Eye Center, likely by adverse possession. Four, the flood mitigation on Eagle Eye Road, which already experiences numerous closures both north and south. Consideration should be given to the more suitable locations that will be far less costly to the county, such as Wickenburg Escheverria property. Under the present proposal, only the developer would reap the benefits while Maricopa County would shoulder the expenses. The entire scenario literally offers little foreseeable benefit other than to that developer, while ensuring that existing Agila County will suffer the greatest harm. while ensuring that existing Aguila County will suffer the greatest harm. We're confident that after a full and responsible review, the county will agree this entire project fails its citizens in every significant way and reject this project.
Thank you, sir. Up next, Bob Sims?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Bob Sims. I live at 50836 West William Road in the Eagle Roost Air Park. It's approximately three-quarters of a mile from this proposed location. I am a retired Kansas Highway Patrol pilot. I retired as a lieutenant with twenty-seven years of service, have several thousand hours of flight time and instruction to others as a check pilot and hundreds of thousands of takeoffs and landings. You've heard here from the other pilots that a lot of them crash. Well, fortunately, most of them don't, and we don't want to end them up in there. These two airparks, been there fifty years, obviously. The FAA, before they will bless or approve these airparks, looks at the entire area. At the time they were approved, there was no development either north or south of the extended runway. If you look at the area map, that runway is three-quarters of a mile to the north of the proposed site in a direct line. So if you take off to the south, you will be, by the time you get there at eighty or ninety knots, talking technically now, you'll be doing about forty to forty-five seconds from the time you leave the runway, you'll be right over the top of that at somewhere between, depending on the airplane, three hundred and fifty feet to five hundred feet. That's low. And right there at that location is where you start your right turn to go back and enter the pattern. The pattern is a racetrack-shaped event. So you work your way around. If you come in and you're landing to the north, you will come in to ride over the run, over the event center, and turn at a low altitude again, reducing power, making lots of noise, one way or another. And as a former roper myself, I don't want to be on the horse trying to throw a winning loop when the big scary airplane comes over and all the critters start looking up and the cattle scatter, and it's going to be a big wreck, because I've seen that happen before. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Dr. Lee Jones?
Good morning. My name is Dr. Lee Jones. I live at 51852 West Pete Road in Aguila, directly north of the project. I'm an Arizona licensed physician. There are many reasons why this proposed project is a nightmare for those who live here. I'm simply going to focus on a couple of items of health and safety. Our neighborhood is downhill and downwind from the proposed Gambler's Row. Animal feces and urine do contain pathogens, which are viruses, bacteria, and parasites that can be transferred to humans, mostly by contaminated water and soil, and also by flies and rodents. Fermenting urine creates toxic gases, such as ammonia and hydrogen sulfide, which are somewhat dangerous to humans. No matter how much you shovel, there will always be residual animal poop. Of course, you can't shovel the urine either. Rainstorms do occur here year-round. The runoff will flush out the contaminated water from the cattle holding pens, which will then run across Pete Road and wind up in my front yard. I don't want this stuff in my front yard. Even if all the county guidelines are followed to a T, they're completely inadequate and won't protect from many of the hazards that I'm talking about. To me, it's unconscionable for the commission to even consider allowing the project to move forward when it could have such a negative health impact for all of us. I would say to the panel, please do not approve this project, when there are so many reasons why doing so would be the wrong thing to do.
Thank you very much. Up next, Jane Boykin?
My name is Jane Boykin. I live at Eagle Roost Air Park at 51122 West Iber Road in Aguila. When you hear the word "feedlot," what's the first thing that pops into your mind? The smell, right? That eye-watering, nose-burning stench that penetrates your car or home, even when the doors and windows are tightly closed. So how many livestock constitutes a feedlot? A large feedlot is defined as a thousand cattle or five hundred horses. Gambler's Row estimates on having a minimum of one thousand fifty roping teams. That calculates into two thousand one hundred horses and one thousand fifty steers. That's over three thousand animals. That's comparable to a large feedlot. One horse produces thirty-five to fifty pounds of manure a day. A cow can produce up to eighty-two pounds of manure a day. The estimated total amount of manure for one day at Gambler's Row will be twenty-five thousand pounds. This project is wanting to run under the guidelines of a special usage permit. But in reality, this project should be a commercial operation. They need to be monitored and to have, follow the guidelines of state and federal regulations. They're putting basically a large feedlot in our backyard. You'll be destroying airparks that have been established for over fifty years, and our homes have mostly retired in elderly individuals. I am not in favor of Gambler's Row.
Thank you very much. Next, Tamara Zogelman?
Good morning. I'm Tamara Zogelman. I am opposed to the location of this project. I reside at 50807 West William Road, Aguila, Arizona. The subject I want to speak about is namely urine. You have a thousand fifty horse roping teams, which means a thousand fifty cattle, two thousand one hundred head of horses totaling three thousand one fifty total animal units in one concentrated area. That equates to three thousand one fifty gallons of urine, not manure, just urine. Add to urine thirty-one thousand gallons of water for dust control, sixteen thousand gallons of water for humans, eight thousand gallons for animals to drink, fifty-five thousand, that is in addition to three thousand one hundred and fifty gallons of urine. Retention facilities are only at cattle pens, nothing for entire area. Wastewater, as well as urine, going to be held where? When we get a good rain, due to the nature of the soil, it just runs off live sheet water. The entire seventy-four acres runs north. The retention ponds will overflow and just run downhill to the north to dry creek beds into and past houses, lawns, and water wells. Who is going to be responsible for enforcing clean water downstream when the entire area floods? Are you going to demand clean water compliance monitoring devices as required by the Clean Water Act and EPA? Then who is going to enforce this program? The applicant states, we will comply with Maricopa County regulations. However, when flooding rain overflow their facilities, urine, waste, manure all flows downhill into and through residential housing. Why do you think they placed on their plat map thirty houses above the arena? This is not only a hazard to the water system, but also a danger to humans. It would and could result in gastrointestinal illness and death. It also creates nitrates in the water, causing cancer risks, thyroid issues, and increased risk to elderly, which our parks are composed of. I would beg you commissioners to vote no to the location of this project, as the area is not suitable for a program of this magnitude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, Janet Riffle?
Hello, my name is Janet Riffle. My husband and I have been full-time residents in Eagle Roost Air Park on Pete Road since nineteen ninety-six because we wanted to live and work in a peaceful area with dark skies. My husband is an avid astronomer, and we also had a business making and selling telescopes. For many years, the dark skies in Aguila gave us spectacular views of the stars and planets, but the phoenix sprawl has greatly degraded that. Now we are potentially faced with stadium lights just a mile line of sight to the southwest from our doorstep. Those lights, along with lots of headlights, will illuminate not only the horses, trucks, and trailers, but also the awful dust sure to follow all that activity day and night, increasing the risk of valley fever. You stipulate, quote, "A water truck shall be employed to control dust within areas and on-site," end quote. Do you really believe one water truck will be deployed continuously when activity is occurring? And who is going to enforce that rule when dust becomes a problem? The prevailing winds at our home are from the southwest, which is exactly where this project is to be located. Also, additional huge quantities of water will be used by all the horses and cows, which could cause our water table to drop or land subsidence due to over-pumping. Concerning lights, they can be pointed away from us and totally shielded. But the bottom line is, we will definitely see a glow in that direction where there was none before. Regarding noise, we can already hear vehicles going over the cattle guard at the top of Eagle Eye Road a mile away. So we are confident we will hear the loudspeakers too, even if pointed away from us. Your original decision not to approve this permit was the correct one. Please stand by that.
Thank you. Up next, Steve Boyd?
My name is Steve Boyd. I live right in the middle between both airparks. Do not have a plane. I'm a horse person, been in horse business for thirty-five years. So I know a little about the livestock industry. And I also, being a Colorado resident, kind of a snowbird down here, I've been able to work around a couple of projects about this size. So I have a little bit of experience in kind of what goes into them, and I've read through a lot of the paperwork here. And one thing I have not really seen come up, if they've done an environmental impact study on this six hundred and forty acres. I would like to see that. And Aguila being, I know there's a lot of archaeological areas around the area there. Have they done an archaeological study? There's going to be a lot of excavation there? Are they going to be digging up sites, or has that been addressed? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Glenda Srodzki?
My name's Glenda Srodzki, and I want to thank the commission for its time today. The concept of this project has a lot of merit. However, its location is entirely inappropriate. The developer is doing what developers do, artfully proposing concepts and downplaying safety issues to maximize profits. This developer, however, has gone to great lengths to manipulate data and misrepresent reality while offering no real solutions to real problems. The reality is that this project has a tremendous negative impact and is awash with safety issues. The reality is that traffic accidents occur when road infrastructure cannot handle the volume and flow of traffic. Horses do get spooked over the loud noise of airplane propellers. Airplane engines fail from time to time, and planes crash. The reality is that massive volumes of excrement and urine-soaked soil are a biohazard. During the monsoon season, water runs downhill and will continue to flow right through the waste collection pens and urine-saturated soil, flooding the two adjacent residential neighborhoods and on through to the town of Aguila. Did the commission consider that the developer strategically located his accompanying residential development uphill and upwind from the proposed facility? Well, we know why. The two airparks we represent were thoughtfully located away from other developments for safety reasons. Likewise, this project should be thoughtfully located elsewhere in the name of safety for all the reasons you have heard today. If the tables were turned, would you approve two new airports next to this development? To conclude, the developer has not offered any meaningful mitigants to the real health, environmental, and safety hazards that the location of this project presents. There have been no material changes to the proposal as originally presented to you on November second, and Maricopa County does not have the resources to monitor and enforce the proposed conditions of approval. Therefore, we respectfully request your thoughtful reconsideration of the many unmitigated and unresolved issues and conclude that this is not the right location for Gambler's Row. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Blue Crowley?
It's not my first time. I live part of the year on Eagle Eye Road, but three-eighths of a mile north of there on Penny Denton's property. She's a horse person and asked me to come down and let you people know that she's in support of the project, that when it comes to noise, as they've said over and over again, they are the ones that make noise. When I hear about the dust, I consider that same object on that. When they've been up here, they've said that there have been accidents. There are no accidents when it comes to a plane crash. It's always pilot error from non-maintenance or his inability to take the situation. But it is the pilot who is responsible for his aircraft. So if it fails mechanically or from use, that's them, and that's why the FAA makes sure that that doesn't happen. So I'm hoping that you guys are being conscientious and taking care of your equipment. This project and its location and their complaints on Eagle Eye, I've been living out there since oh-nine, up and on, and sometimes those trans boys are huge. And when they talk about safety, you know, yesterday, they approved a cell tower right on the other side of sixty at Fourth Avenue, one hundred and ten feet tall. But they didn't say put a light on it. Is that a safety problem for y'all?
Thank you very much. All right, we have several people who are in opposition, who do not wish to speak, but we need to get their names in record. James G. Fowler is opposed to this project. Elaine Fowler is opposed to this project. Jeanette Isert. Sabrina Sims. Linda Gifford. And Michael Renath. Hope I got that right? All right, so moving on. All right, we also have several people who are in person for support of this project. And again, can you please keep your comments and concerns short? And if you have to repeat something that somebody else said, you know, just make note of that. All right, first up, George Reed?
My name is George Reed. I live at 509 West Church Street, fully in support of the project. In my view, the tangible criteria is the county standards. The county standards is certainly my view that any concerns have been properly mitigated according to standards. So two comments. One, I rope almost every day in Aguila, and there's planes buzzing around. And my neighbors who enjoy aviation have a right to fly their planes. Good for them. What I notice is the horses could absolutely care less. A lot of our horses have been around rodeos, and they're used to huge crowds. They're used to fireworks indoors. And I know my own horse is more likely to be concerned about a sheep that he hasn't seen before, a rogue wiener dog or something. So I do not believe that that's an issue. The other thing that strikes me as somebody, you know, I own a place in Aguila, and I certainly pay taxes, but I don't live in Aguila year-round. But there's a lot of poor folks that live in Aguila, and they're not represented in a venue like this because they're busy working. and they're not represented in a venue like this because they're busy working today. And all the neighbors that I've spoke to, and I've spoken to many of them, are just thrilled for, you know, the $20 million that's coming in to be spent in this town and the opportunity for them to maybe have their kids work or maybe to provide educational opportunities for their kids. And it's not every day that an opportunity like this comes around to a poor town. So good for these guys. I hope they're successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Jim Dunning. Downing, Jim Downing.
Mr. Chairman, he was with the applicant. I believe he already spoke.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Sally Miller. Sir Sally Miller. I was like, somebody signed you up to speak.
I guess you heard my name, Sally Miller. I live
Closer.
I live on West Church Street also. My biggest feeling from the positive that would come of this air park is the extra services provided in our community. I'm a local emergency room nurse. We see big delays, people getting transported from Aguilah Salome to appropriate facilities. I feel like having the extra tax dollars in our community could make a huge difference there to people's lives and possible outcomes after strokes and heart attacks, on top of the fact that just would provide a whole lot more services to our town. That's the best I can say without being prepared.
Thank you. Okay, I apologize on this one. Roger Z.
Good morning. My name is Roger Dryaski. I'm a member of the volunteer fire department in Aguilah. I have been on the services for over 10 years. I retired off the fire department in Michigan when I moved here. I'm in favor of the project. I think it will bring tax revenue into the fire department and the school, which will help in turn improve our services to the community. And adding the extra workforce to the community will bring more revenue in. And hopefully it will bring new businesses into town and help improve the community tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last card here to speak is John Mirless, but that's the applicant, correct? Okay. Do you wish to speak? Okay. All right. I got several here still. Is there more? Do we have anymore? How do we handle this?
Just get a sheet of paper and have the people just put their names so you'll have it for the record. I don't think any of the information on the cards is going to be surprise, you know, they won't.
Okay, so while we get some of these handled, I'll go ahead and read off the people who are here in support that do not wish to speak. Crystal Mathwich. Are you Crystal? Okay, what's your name? Okay, well, perfect. If you want to come up, you can come speak.
Hi, my name is Crystal Mathwick. I didn't plan to speak, but I do think I should. I am the person, from what they're referring to as Sampley Air Park, that is in favor. There's multiple of my neighbors that are also in favor. I have started working with the project management to address the concerns of my neighbors, many of them who are not here that are also in opposition, and working to solve problems before this thing is built. I think it can bring value to our community. And for right now, in our air parks, we can't sell our properties because they're not worth anything and because we restrict horses in there. And all the properties around us are selling for twice as much. So I think that that would really bring value to our properties. I do hope that the air parks are maintained as air parks. That is why I'm in the air park. And the last thing I want to say is that when I moved into the air park, people were very opposed of me being there because I'm a horse girl and my husband's a pilot. They would literally take off and buzz my house. My horses do not care. So I went by their houses and I met them and I said, hey, if you're going to buzz my house, tip your wings. And my kids love it. So I'm just saying, we can work together and we can make this a really great project despite some of the misinformation that was presented. One that I'd like to address, when they say we're having 1,000 team roping, that doesn't mean there's 1,000 separate teams. That means that one person may enter six times. So you have to divide that number by six. So it's a lot smaller number than what they're trying to propose. And it just takes some information and knowing of how these facilities run before you push it off and say it won't work. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rosalie, do these people want to speak or no? No, she handed me another card too. Okay. Okay, so we'll go through people who want to speak. Cheyenne Sofel.
Good morning to all. I am Cheyenne Sofel. I reside in Aguilah. I'd like to touch on the opposition turnover. I was personally involved in it on a day-to-day basis from the beginning of this project proposal. I spent countless hours reaching out to several of these residents. I find as we have visited with several of the opposition people face-to-face, on a face-to-face basis, they have gotten some real facts. They are willing to see the positive things this project brings to the community, and they have changed their minds. These folks we visited with had a lot of misfed information. We found that once we showed them the facts and give their vote, they gave their vote of support. In doing my outreach, we might not have changed the red to greens on the map, but there are several people that have reached out that would like to change their vote but don't want to disturb their way of life by making their neighbors upset. I have visited face-to-face with several of these folks inside the air park, and we have gained several votes along with, since the last meeting, along with several that are not shown on the map due to reasons of upsetting their neighbors and the neighbors in the air park coming to their homes. I'd like to touch on the concerns of the cattle and horses and planes being spooked. I have had several personal experience over the years with the government and low-flying planes. I worked these jobs for several years. And horses, you know, we're experts. You guys are experts. You know, if everything's handled right, your plane's in coordinates. We know the risk we're taking once we climb on their backs. These horses and the cattle don't get spooked. So in that being said, I think that we can all live together, address each other's concern and live adjacent to each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Crystal, man, I can't see, I can't read the writing, but Crystal M. Oh, I thought that was Cheyenne. Oh, Crystal, okay, I got you. Tracy Wood.
My name is Tracy Wood, and first of all, thanks for letting me speak even though I wasn't signed up. She kind of addressed the team count. What y'all don't know, if you see 1,050 teams, those guys get to enter six times. So that gets reduced down to, if you do rough math, let's say about 350 people. Those cattle will run, even if you split them up and you put in two separate pens of cattle, you're only talking about maybe 300 head of cattle unless you have another reason. So it is not a feedlot atmosphere. I am from Sidney, Montana, where I lived and worked at a cell barn for 10 years. I can tell you what the smell is going to be with 6,000 head of cattle and what it's going to be. And it's nowhere close to what a roping smells like. Your traffic on 60, it's already there. I don't know if you realize it, but there's another special use permit arena out there that holds ropings out there. So your traffic on Highway 60, it's already there. Watch it this weekend when there's a big roping this weekend. It's already there. The special use permit, the special use permit, unlike zoning, zoning, you would have to go back in and have changed like this. The special use permits, they can be taken away. So if they don't monitor the dust, the water, the flood, the manure, all the things that are on there, they don't get that back. So what good would that do them to invest the millions of dollars they're going to put into this piece of property if they can just have that permit taken away in 10 years? It would be gone. And I realize 10 years is a long time to y'all because it's affecting your property. But if they don't maintain that, they lose that. There's no point. The other side of that is there's nowhere else to build in Wickenburg. It's moving to Aguilah. It's moving to Aguilah. So you can either have one big organization that comes in and makes these improvements and has to adhere to these policies, or you can sell that property to 20 different people who are still going to bring the cattle and horses in, maybe not in that volume, but they're not going to be monitored. Those guys are not going to be monitored. You're worried about the dust control and somebody said, who's going to monitor the truck? I suggest you go down to Rancho Rio and watch that water truck drive around that parking lot 10 times a day to make sure the dust is down. There is somebody that monitors it. They do take it seriously. That's all I wanted to say. There was just a couple of things that y'all had addressed. And like I said, hopefully you'll do your research and see there's two sides to this. They brought up some good things, but there's answers to these. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Kyle Welch.
Good morning. My name's Kyle Welch. I live at 49211 North Eagle Eye Road. Been there seven years. I'm a property owner there. The one thing I do want to address here in this situation, I realize there's a lot of emotion involved in all this. But this was a private piece of ground that was sold by a person that actually lived in Sampley Air Park to a private outfit that's trying to put in a business, and they're trying to do the right things by the community, for the community. I think we should give them that opportunity. Think the guidelines of the permit is going to give them the opportunity to do right by what the community needs are. And I think the community is going to realize a pretty big boom from it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Johnny, I think it's Millard. I can't read the handwriting there, but Johnny M.
My name is Johnny Millard. I've made a living in the rodeo, in the roping world for 70 years. I'm 90 years old. I don't have a dog in this race, but I heard a lady mention a while ago about noise from livestock. I live one-quarter of a mile above the airport north. And every day, we can't talk because of the airplanes. Cows and horses come years before airplanes and cars. And maybe we ought to have them put mufflers on airplanes. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, up next, Wesley Pruitt.
My name's Wesley Pruitt. I wasn't going to talk, but after hearing a few things, I wanted to say something. So I own property in the air park just north of it. My friends introduced us to Aguilah. We fell in love with it, so we bought property. The town has ran down. And this could bring revenue, not only for the fire station, the schools, but also for roads. The cafe there remodeled in anticipation of people coming. So you got to think about the people that own stuff. Also, on the topic of the waste, I grew up on 120-acre dairy. And there's policies and procedures in place for the waste. So it just doesn't run on your property. And I think everybody can work together and live together, and I think it's going to be a good thing. I approve.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we've covered everybody who wishes to speak. Sure, yeah, just go ahead and come up and speak your name for the record.
My name is Haley Sofel. And, you know, I've personally got to be around this place and the property for the last year since the guy has owned it, you know? Well, last year, we put up 300 head of mother cows and babies up there. And there was not one person that complained about having those cattle up there. Not one of them noticed it. And, you know, that's pretty dang close for their airplanes. If they're flying above them, surely they're going to notice them in there. But not only were they in there with their babies and so many cattle in there, there was a truck going in and out daily checking on them and guys on horses going in and checking on them. And not one person complained about those being up there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, I think finally we're through everyone who wished to speak in person. Next, we'll just read into the record everyone who was in attendance for, in support of this case. Rodney Nguyen. We have to read all these in, right? No, we don't need to? Okay, perfect. We'll do that to save us some time because we've got quite a stack here, so. Okay, David, are there any raised hands online?
There's no one online wishing to speak.
All right, sounds good. So it sounds like we're done with the public speakers. We will give two minutes for the applicant for rebuttal on any of the issues.
Thank you so much. Just in closing, again, thank you everyone for showing up today. This is a very important part of the process. Like I said, we do intend to work with residents of Aguilah and the nearby community. But I also want to just note that air parks and airports all over the state, you know, they all start with just a strip, but then it turns into a development. I personally grew up across the street from Scottsdale Air Park, and I flew out of Scottsdale Air Park. There's many horse properties around. It was never an issue. And it has grown into what we know as Scottsdale today. So I also wanted to add that the tax revenue, because of this area, we're going to be bringing in revenue for schools, for fire, for police. And then to also end, Senator Shamp, who represents the adjacent community or district right next to it, she had to take off, go down to the Capitol. But she wanted to make sure that I let the commissioners know and also everybody in the audience that herself, her seatmates, Representative Montenegro, Representative Smith, and also LD30, which is where the project will reside, all of those representatives, Biassucci, Senator Borelli and Gillette, all support the project as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions of the commission or the applicant at this time? All right, thank you. Hearing done. We'll close the public forum. All right, I know there's a lot to unpack there with the commission. Does, I guess, before I ask anybody else, you know, I was very opposed to this case the first time it came around. I did lots of research when this case packet came back out. And I think that the applicant has done a great job of addressing the concerns of the neighbors. And I'm in full support of this project at this time. So is there anybody else in the commission who has any comments or questions or want to discuss anything?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say a word if I could.
Absolutely, Commissioner Arnett.
So thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I was here at the last case and we listened to everybody. It's really great to see this process, right? Because you see different vantage points, and I know that my position is probably not going to change. But it's interesting, this case is a little different because normally we always hear in these rural areas how, you know, animals good, planes bad. And this has kind of flipped today a little bit. But if there's one thing I've learned from listening to everybody today is we have competing But if there's one thing I've learned from listening to everybody today is we have competing interests. We really do. It's hard when we know what to put in different places. For some, it's a huge upswing for value or for community. For some, it's just noise and it's traffic. But that's why we go through this process. I appreciate staff's report. I reread and reread. I know I'm not an expert in flights. That's why I lean on paragraph nine and some other things about the FAA. I leave traffic and those things. There's always going to be people that disagree and people that agree. But I love the presenter that said, I'm a horse girl. I think she said her husband or her spouse was a pilot. We can come to common ground here, even though we have very strong, strong opinions for or against. Not everyone's going to like it, but I appreciate staff's work on this. Until studying this, I never knew the amount of waste a 1,000-pound animal could produce in a day, but I do now. And I feel very confident that we've at least addressed the issues. And keep in mind, if this was a zoning case for me personally, that was permanent zoning, an entirely different discussion. They've got 10 years to be a good neighbor. If not, we're right back here again. So as a 10-year SUP, I'm 100% supportive of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnett. Very well said. Commissioner Landall?
Yeah, I would like to echo what you and Commissioner Arnett have said. And I originally had voted to deny it as well and have been swayed by the modifications that were proposed. I think they're addressing many of the concerns. I'd also like to thank everyone for writing in opposition and in support. One of the letters wondered if we actually read them. I know I have read all of them, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So I just wanted to put that out there and appreciate everyone who came to speak. It's been immensely helpful. But I think overall, the compromise seems there. And I also agree that the 10-year SUP is what really, it would be a very different case. This was not just the 10-year SUP. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Landall. Do any other commissioners have any thoughts or anything they wish to say? All right, hearing none. I'll see, you know, I'm open for a motion.
I don't want to step on anyone's district, but I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Arnett?
I'll make a motion to approve, according to staff's report in the case of Z2022171.
All right, we have a motion for recommendation of approval by Commissioner Arnett?
I will second it, Commissioner Landall, assuming no one from that district. I think it's just you today, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Landall. Is there any comments on the motion? All right, hearing none. Rosalie?
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Curly?
Yes.
Commissioner Landall?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Limblum?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you very much, Rosalie. And I want to say thank you, everyone, for coming down. It's great to see community support like this. I think we have more speakers today than we had in every hearing last year put together. So thank you, guys, for coming down. Other matters? All right, with no other matters, we will adjourn the meeting at 11:05.